Well, good evening colleagues and welcome to two special meetings tonight and also to the members of the public that have joined us. The first special meeting is a special planning authority meeting to deal with the application down at the airport roundabout. And once we've completed that item, we'll move to the special planning meeting with several, two planning items and there's the Greater Hobart Bill as well to discuss that, as well as one confidential item. Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as the traditional custodians of the land we're meeting on tonight and pay our respects to elders past and present. I'd also like to advise the meeting that recordings are being made, audio visually, and they will be available on the council website later this week. Thank you. So moving, I declare the special planning authority meeting open. And Alderman Peers has indicated that he may be late, but we'll take him as an apology at this stage. Declarations of interest of Alderman or close associate, are there any declarations of interest? In that case, we'll move on to reports of officers, in particular, item 3.1, the development application for land at the junction of the Tasman Highway and Holliman Avenue. The proceedings for tonight are that in the first instance, being a planning authority meeting, we take representations, general manager, but I understand there are none. So in that case, it's a matter of having a move-in or a second there and moving into debate. Thank you. Alderman Newington, do we have a second up for the officer's recommendation? Thanks Alderman Longley. Alderman Newington, would you like to speak to the motion for the airport roundabout? Alderman Longley?
No, I don't have a moment.
Any other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
I would just like to say, well, of course, how can we do anything but say, at last you're going to fix a little bottleneck, but I'd just like to get it in context. Doing this on its own, at this point in time, does absolutely nothing for the traffic congestion on the eastern shore, other than kick the can down the road from the airport midway point up to Tunnel Hill and Cambridge. That's because, you know, once they're through that, that just brings them up to the next bottleneck down the road even faster than they used to before. So it really doesn't solve strategically the traffic problems. The only way we're going to do that is to bypass the bottlenecks, find a way to absorb the commuter traffic in Hobart so that it's got somewhere where it can rapidly go and doesn't have to clog up the highways to get there. And then we need to do the bypasses in Hobart, so the traffic that doesn't need to go into Hobart can go through. And then we can look at how we encourage a greater use of the Bow and Bridge. Once all those things are fixed, that's why, then, so we need to work from the inside out. What are we doing? We're working from the outside in. And every time we do some new road improvement, the next bottleneck down the road, like Wellington Roundabout, when we do the South Arm Highway works. And all we're doing is compounding it. So if we're going to become strategic about our transport corridors, we need to work from the inside out. We are doing the opposite.
Other speakers? Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is about time we actually ticked this item off. And today I actually drove from Lindisfarne to Sorrel and Bank. And of course, anybody who travels on the Tasman Highway between the hours of, what, 3:30 in the afternoon and heading south, experienced the bottleneck at the airport roundabout. This work that will be undertaken will improve that, but what it doesn't do is in fact, look beyond. And I do note, and we are aware, that tonight we're going to discuss the Greater Hobart Act. And in that act, it does refer to facilitate the efficient flow of transport in the Greater Hobart area, and that includes Clarence. Now, before I continue, I'd like to ask a question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Graham in his capacity as group manager, asset management. Mr. Graham, the planned work beyond the airport roundabout, has there been given any consideration for upgrading that section of the highway from the airport roundabout to in fact, to Sorrel? Has it been considered as part of the, the transport integration system, as part of the, the plan that's, may consider beyond the work that's being proposed in relation to the airport roundabout? Is there any consideration being given and as to when that section or that part of the highway would be upgraded to obviously complement the work that's being done at the airport roundabout?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Council's part of a working group of DSG doing all their work on possible improvements from our Tasman Bridge, so I don't know if there's any interchange, but I don't understand, I don't know what DSG's work is from travelling up east from the interchange through Sorrel.
Thanks, Mr. Graham.
Thank you. I thought there was some discussion in relation to work that may need to be done in relation to that, and there was a timeframe that has been expressed, I think in privately, that we're looking at 2050.
Alderman James, general manager, might be able to throw some light on this here?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I am of the understanding that the current government during the election campaign made some promises in relation to that, the section from, I'll call it, from the airport through to Sorrel, but as of yet, we haven't seen anything that I'm aware of come out of the Department of State Growth in relation to that. Certainly there was discussion that there was going to be work done, but we haven't seen anything in relation to that. Our focus has been on trying to get them, the department to commit to works, I'd say, on the city side of the Hobart Airport Corridor.
Oh, I'll keep my comments in relation to the Greater Hobart Bill because I think that's, it has been incorporated in that. And suffice to say that in there, it does mention the, as I mentioned a moment ago, to facilitate the effective flow, the efficient flow of transport to the Greater Hobart area. And I believe that is part and parcel of the development from the airport roundabout to Sorrel. I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I think it's really important to state on the record, everyone around this table understands that this is not the Clarence City Council development that we went through on our budget process and we allocated rate payers dollars to. This is a state government project with federal government funding. We all may have a different hierarchy of where we would wish for that infrastructure dollar to be spent, but I for one am very pleased that dollar is being spent within our municipality. Our municipality. The airport is in the municipality of Clarence despite what some neighbouring councils may wish to do, which is to appropriate it for themselves. It is a vital piece of infrastructure. And will this initially provide respite and relief for some of the commuter traffic? Perhaps not, but what it unquestionably will do, unquestionably will do, will approve access and egress to and from the airport. A major job industry, a major wealth-creating part of our municipality, gateway into the state, a gateway for exports as well. This piece of infrastructure is welcome. As I said, it's, it's not perfect. I, it has been built with, like many infrastructure projects, there are challenges and things that have to be worked through. I'm not necessarily sure that, that the access and egress for westbound traffic along the Tasman Highway through this is, is ideal if they're coming to the airport or exiting and continuing westward. And also, as they meet and the traffic from Kennedy Drive comes over, I think that, that will be something, will be an interesting thing to watch over time. But this is infrastructure investment within our municipality and the end result will be better in access in and out of the airport. And I also believe it will be an important part of the, the traffic solution. Maybe not the silver bullet, but it's part of it. So I do support it and I would urge all my colleagues to do likewise.
Thank you. Other speakers? Put the most in the recommendation that we approve the plans, all those in favour? Carried unanimously, close the planning special meeting and declare the other special And take a moment to reshuffle papers. Once again, we've got Alderman Peers as an apology. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest? Item three, deputations by members of the public, general manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First speaker this evening is Mr. Michael Edwards of Corinth Street, who wishes to address council in relation to development application 2018/671 at 19 Corinth Street. Come forward for us.
As you're coming forward, I do need to remind all speakers that there's only an opportunity for three minutes and there'll be a warning tone at two and a half minutes to give you a chance to wind up. Thank you.
I'm Michael Edwards, owner and resident of 17 Corinth Street, speaking on behalf of myself and Dr. Christine Edwards. Thank you, Alderman, for visiting our property and I present evidence this afternoon as to why the application should be rejected. Unit two projects outside the building envelope on three sides. At the northwest corner, the encroachment is three metres. I refer to images 1A and drawings 1B and 1C to demonstrate the encroachment is 1.976 metres at the northeast corner. The driveway is raised 1.84 metres above natural ground level at the northeast corner and the height of the unit two at the northeast corner is 4.976 metres above natural ground level. The artist's impression and the unit two east elevation drawings do not accurately represent the height of unit two above natural ground level. When viewed from our adjacent block at number 17 Corinth Street, unit two presents as a two-storey building, not a single-storey building. Unit two is not consistent with other dwellings in the area because no other dwellings of this scale in this vicinity have boundary walls up to six metres high and 11 metres long. Yes, twice the height of the building envelope with zero metres setback. We assert that unit two will cause unreasonable loss of amenity and will cause unreasonable visual impact. I refer to photographs from our representation, 2B, 3B and 4B, to demonstrate how we will lose sight of key features, including Bruny Island and significant areas of the Geraint Estuary seascape to our south. From our garden, the five to six metre high and 11 metre long boundary wall will tower above us and enclose our private outdoor space. The application does not comply with performance criteria P3A4 of clause 1042A3 and should be rejected. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Elaine Whitam, also at Corinth Street, who wishes to address council in respect of the same matter.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, my name's Elaine Whitam and I'm speaking this evening on behalf of my husband, Dr. Philip Whitam, and myself. Many of you have taken the time and trouble to visit our property to see how things are from our perspective. I thank you for this. We contend that the proposed building at number 19 does not comply with the planning scheme for the following reasons. Firstly, overshadowing. We contest the accuracy of the shadow diagrams. At midwinter, we receive almost no sunlight on our northern walls and our rear garden receives no sunlight until about 1pm. The shadow diagrams do not show this. In particular, they show the lawn receiving a substantial amount of sunlight between 10am and 12 noon. This does not occur. The overshadowing caused by unit two would significantly reduce the little sunlight we now enjoy in winter. The current shadow diagrams which you have been provided with do show significant shading of our garden in the morning and much more than 50% shading in the afternoon. I do not consider the shading impact on our private outdoor space to be reasonable. Secondly, visual impacts of the apparent scale, bulk or proportions of the dwelling. Mike Edwards has explained to those who visited our properties how he and my husband calculated the markings on the posts erected on, in the garden. In particular, the high markings was designate the ridge line. The statement that the living space of 21 Corinth Street is elevated above the roofline of the proposed dwelling is incorrect. The ridge line is approximately 2.6 metres above the floor level of our family room. From our family room, this ridge line cuts across a considerable part of the view and would block views of Hobart City from a large part of the room. At the rear of our property, the proposed, the proposed building would loom over our garden and outside entertaining areas and completely dominate the view to the north. The comment that mature landscaping will obscure the majority of the proposed building is incorrect, as those of you who have visited will know. We have removed eight large reedy trees to let more sunlight into our garden. From our rear garden patio area, there is now only one tree which would partially screen the view of the building. What we would see from our garden is a very tall brick veneer wall, 11.9 metres long, 1.8 metres away from the fence. The top of the wall would be 3.6 metres higher than the boundary fence at the eastern end and 4.9 metres higher than the fence at the western end. While the proposed building will present as a single story from the street, from our rear garden, it presents as higher than two stories as our ground level is lower than that of 19. For these reasons, we contend that the proposed dwelling does not comply with the planning scheme and therefore this meeting of council should reject the development, development application for 19 Corinth Street.
Thank you. Number speaker? Thank you. I now like to advise that council intends to sit as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act, and the first item on the agenda is item 4.1, development application at 19 Corinth Street for two multiple dwellings. Alderman Warren? You okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move an alternate proposal, an alternate motion, which I believe all Aldermen have in front of them.
Do we have a second up for that before proceeding, please? Thank you, Alderman James. Alderman Warren?
Okay, I don't suppose to leave this out, it's still covered in the document. But it suggests that the application should be refused for two reasons, one being that it does not satisfy the performance criteria to do with overshadowing and secondly, that it does not satisfy the performance criteria to do with amenity. So the reasons are that the overshadowing, as I have the diagram in front of me here as provided by our respondents, does show a significant, more than 50% overshadowing of the garden. And because I visited the property on Saturday, Friday morning, this part is all vegetation, this is the part that is actually accessible, usable garden, and that's well within the shadowing part. Now, we could argue about whether the respondents' calculations are correct or whether the modelling software is correct, but I believe there's sufficient uncertainty there for us to reconsider this. The second point about unreasonable amenity, again, the respondents had taken the time and effort to erect flags or poles with orange flags at the strategic point, which made it a really easy visual assessment of the view. And to me, it was clear that you would not be able to see Hobart City. So in the report from the council, which I have on page 13, it says specifically that it's considered that the overall loss of views could be relatively small in the context of the current view field with key visual features within the landscape such as Mount Wellington and Hobart City remaining unaffected. So I don't believe that that's the case, so I would query that. So those are the, the two main grounds that I think that we should refuse this application. Look, because there is some uncertainty about whether the modelling figures are correct or the respondents' figures are correct, and I'm not here to judge that, I do note that the respondents have qualifications in scientific method and building surveying, so it's not just your average Joe Blow from down the streets. So there is a degree of interest in perhaps testing those, but as I said, I'm not here to judge whose set of figures is correct, but I do believe there's sufficient uncertainty. It would be a shame if we approved this. It was built and then we thought, oh, council's figures were actually wrong. It's too late, it's overshadowing, you've lost the, the garden, you've lost the views. So I commend this motion to council.
Thank you, Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we need to appreciate this point, two factors that we need to be considering in this instance. Firstly, we're dealing with outside the building envelope and secondly, setbacks. And we have to go through the performance criteria in order to be able to justify as to whether or not this particular project should get a tick in the box. On page 12 of the report, it spells out the performance criteria, P1 10.4.2 and Roman numeral four, the visual impacts caused by the apparent scale, bulk or proportions of the dwelling when viewed from adjoining lot. So that's the performance criteria and we need to go through that and assess it as to whether or not it does cause problems in relation to the adjoining blocks. We heard from the residents at number 17, Corinth Street, and we've all received a sort of a snapshot of what the bulk, scale and size of this development will be imposed upon in relation to the residents at number 17. And by the very nature of referring to the performance criteria, it's quite clear that this particular development is nothing like it in that particular area. I say that because unit two is basically an extension of the building that extends to the foreshore, as close to the foreshore as the public viewing platform is that is on the rocks, basically. It is on the property because the boundaries in that particular area go to the high watermark. That has been established and it's private ownership to the high watermark. So in actual fact, this bulk, scale and size of building has been extended from the existing building down to, almost to the foreshore. So that by the very nature has created, and I use these words very carefully, the great wall of Corinth Street, because that is really what it is. That's so imposing because this particular development, there's nothing like it elsewhere within that particular area. The other factor that comes into mind, and it was discussed by the residents at number 21, and you've all received a, an extract of what the north, north easterly aspect will be. And in that, it does not, it does not give a clear panoramic view of that area. In fact, as you extend 10 a north easterly direction, you see parts of Mount Wellington, but not all of it. And there is just the tip of Collins Cap, uh, not of Collins Vale, which in fact is part and parcel as you extend further north. So again, you have the bulk, scale and size of this particular development which extends almost to the foreshore, which overshadows the property and the open space that is at number 21. And so again, from numbers 21, residents of number 21 perspective, again, you have this clear blockout of the north easterly direction, whereas it's in contradiction, in my opinion, to what has been said in the officer's report, that they have a clear panoramic view of the north easterly right through to the south. This is clearly an overdevelopment of the site. We used to use that term quite often under the old planning scheme, but we do have that objective within the Clarence interim planning scheme. And for that reason, what Alderman Warren has said in relation to bulk and scale and the visual impact that is actually imposing on the residents at number 17 and number 21, in my view, do not add up and therefore they are in, in contradiction to the performance criteria of PT1, performance criteria 1 10 4.2 and also 10 4.2 P3A and 4 and A2. I see council support.
Thanks, Alderman James. Other speakers? Alderman Mulder?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think the main thing here is about the bulk and the impact of that on the amenity. And I think that's the main argument we're looking here. We're also, of course, you know, and the impact that that bulk has on the view and also that it has on the, on the, on the shadowing issues. We've, but we've got to see this in the, in the broader context. These, our planning scheme and its interpretation are all the result of ministerial directives as to how we go about these things. And yes, you know, you've raised these two points and I think most of us are aware that there's a history with the planning commission of taking a very broad view of what is bulk and what is amenity and, and scale. I don't like this current fashion for infill and maximizing every square drop of land, but me not liking it is unfortunately not a consideration I can bring to this meeting. I don't like the fact that, as I, as we had a meeting here before, where I asked the question, what controls are there on unit development? And we were given the answer, none, other than lot size. So guess what happens? All our new areas are having nice big lot sizes so that the builders, spec builders can put two dwellings on them instead of one, but they aren't not, they are not decisions that I have made and I sort of feel really awkward sitting here sometimes, having to go up and defend things to take the political heat off the people who did make those sorts of strategic decisions. But anyway, here we are. The overshadowing diagram and Alderman Warren was careful to point out that there's uncertainty about which is the best model to use. Uncertainty about whether we've got the heights and those things right. Well, unfortunately, that's not strong enough. It's not for us to refuse the officer's motion and then trot into the planning commission and try to say, well, you know, there we were uncertain. It's quite clear that if we are going to overturn an officer's decision, as we were so strongly told at various meetings by an independent planning legal expert in this field specializing in this law, that to do so is where angels fear to tread, because of the strictures and the way that this will be done. Now, I really do appreciate the fact that the, the deputations and the representations we've got are based on solid planning grounds. They are good and I would really like that should this application go ahead, that there will be an appeal and at that appeal, we can test the strength of these arguments by the planning commission. And then we will can see if it is, but unless we are sure of our grounds, then we are not in a position to move forward. Now, Alderman James is shaking his head, he may be sure, Alderman Warren may be sure, but then the use of the word uncertainty suggests perhaps we're not. It's only when we are sure of our grounds that we should be the ones that are taking the initiative, that we should be the respondents to any appeal that follows. Because, but otherwise, but this is not to say that I don't find there's quite good arguments, but they haven't quite, but they're not the strength where I can be sure they are right. And if I'm not sure they are right, I am duty-bound by law to revert to the officer's recommendation, which unfortunately I will have to foreshadow.
Other speakers?
Other speakers?
I'm just looking at the shadow diagrams in the planning officer's report and I just draw your attention to the one at fourteen hundred hours and fifteen hundred hours, um, in that report. And you'll see that they both overshadow the usable part of the garden. And in fact, the one at, um, I think it's thirteen hundred overshadows the, um, the private entertaining area. And because I've visited the property, I, I can see how that's going to be a significant problem for lunchtime barbecues. So even going by the, the, um, planning officer's own overshadowing diagram, I think, I, I think it goes to the percentage of usable garden area. Sure, some of the areas with lots of shrubbery might not get shadowed, but I don't think that's really, um, in the spirit of the legislation. I would think that we should be looking at the part of, the usable part of the garden and particularly the private entertainment areas and the amount of shadowing that they reach. And I believe that's more than fifty percent, um, based on the diagrams that have been provided to us by the planning officer. Um, and I think some of that only becomes, um, obvious when you've, you've visited the property. So, um, I would certainly encourage you to, um, consider that, uh, we can refuse this on the grounds that it does not meet the performance criteria of the planning scheme. Um, and I commend that motion to you.
Motion before the chair is refusal. All those in favor? Against? The motion is lost. Alderman Mulder?
Here with, um, I'll move the officer's recommendation as, um, as a four point one.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Alderman Mulder?
As I previously indicated, it was with a little regret that I do this because I, I really.
Alderman James, please.
But this is a case, and I, and I think I said, I just wish that people would take the time and trouble to build within the building envelope. If there's one thing that, that, that's caused a lot of this grief, if that had, if this had been built within the building envelope, we wouldn't even be talking about it. It would be, as I've written, things would sneak through. So a lot of grief could be saved to a lot of people if they just designed these places to be within the envelope. Now, um, in moving the motion, I can, I'll simply refer to the officer's report and I'll also note once again that the, um, the representations and the deputations were of good quality. You know, so often we get people, I don't like it, but here they have done probably better than some of us Aldermen could of actually getting the planning scheme and applying it. And I would seriously encourage them to take their argument to appeal because I think that would be, that would be the best way of testing it. So that, um, council, uh, you know, so that the appeal and those are very, very valid points. I, um, don't live too far from here and once upon a time, uh, that my house was out, built out by units and there was nothing I could do about it. And there's nothing that, um, um, even under the old scheme, uh, that, that this view was, was virtually blocked out, but I could still see over it. Of course, in subsequent years, I've, I've got over that by building another story on my house. But, um, I, I just make the point that I do feel for people, when they have this sort of infill development dropped on top of them and that we as a council, um, you know, if, even if we'd have, even if we'd refused it, we would have then found ourselves in the planning appeals tribunal and we would have to be, you know, then have to be absolutely sure of our grounds if we were not. The actual decision-making body with these things is actually in the, in the, uh, planning appeals tribunal. All we are doing is, um, you know, giving some guidance as to what we think about it. But in the end result, uh, it is their decision. So, uh, as I said, with some reluctance, I'll, I'll recommend the officer's recommendations.
Alderman Von Berta? Alderman James? Look, I've called, uh, I've, I've given you the nod, Alderman James.
That's very clear, that's very clear, thank you very much. Um, Alderman Mulder's wrong. If it had have been within the building envelope and met the required setbacks, Alderman Mulder, then.
Uh, to me, please.
Yeah, look, hang on.
No, no, I must insist.
Then there would have been no issue because it would have been permitted. In this particular case, we're talking about the building envelope and setbacks. I just want to make that clear, Mr. Mayor, because that wasn't actually clear before. The other comment that's been made here is that the decision-making process is in the hands of the planning appeals tribunal. Not necessarily, not necessarily, because there may never be an appeal, there may not be an appeal. And the parties, uh, and there's been examples of that over Tom Molana Road, uh, and that didn't go to appeal and council at the time refused the application. And it was decided between the parties after the event. So it didn't go to appeal. So the decision that, that the council made in relation to refusing that application, in fact, was resolved between the neighbours who had second thoughts about too close to the, the adjoining property. And it was with, obviously, they tried to have the setback, uh, minimized in order to do the building, uh, to make, uh, build the building. So in actual fact, the decision-making process rests with us in the first instance. And it may be the last port of call in relation to that as well. It's disappointing that we tend to, um, uh, cover over the sort of the, the, um, the facts in this particular case because it's quite obvious that the council can refuse this application. And there is also sufficient wriggle room to form a subjective, uh, decision in relation to this. And that has been one of the key matters in relation to whether or not the height or the extension of this particular building extends beyond what is the, um, bulk scale and size or what impact it has on the amenity. And at the preface of the Clarence interim planning scheme, it has its definitions. And amenity is defined quite clearly and it deals with the visual impact, the lifestyle and what is in harmony with the neighbourhood, um, entity. And, and, and so it's quite clear that even though the, um, Clarence interim planning scheme has the subjectivity, it has that option for us to refuse it and this should be the case.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah. Uh, this, you know, part of the reason we have the planning authority is that, uh, we have to sort of work through some challenging, uh, positions. That's, that's the job. If it was all tick and flick, we would see nothing. Uh, this is my usual cue to talk about the two thousand and seven Clarence planning scream, scheme. It was a scream of a scheme. It had the, the chassis of a Ferrari, Alderman Mulder, uh, Mr. Mayor. It was in, it was out, it was, it was, the, the rules were defined and, uh, and I think that's where some tension, uh, uh, has arisen as schemes have evolved under the, you know, Minister, um, Cox or Minister, uh, Green's planning directives, one, two, three and four, and so it goes. Uh, I agonized a little over this, um, because as I usually talk about, you know, we are sitting as a planning authority and as we all know, um, there are limitations and there are things that are ruled, you know, things that we can take into account and things we can't. So, uh, will there be an impact on views? Will there be a, 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 an impact on, um, on, on people adjoining? I'm, I'm sure they would, would very much feel that that's the case. And, and when I went there, I, I could see why that, why they would. Um, the end of the day, the, the refusal as, as drafted, I believe, didn't have the strength to, to be, um, argued successfully at another level. Take all things into account. I guess the area that will, will come into perhaps consideration more than anything is, is around visual bulk. I think that is something that's still evolving as far as how the higher authority consider it. And, uh, the, the case is actually listed on page thirteen in the, um, in the agenda on the matter, where in the, um, case of, I think it was Kasem versus Hobart City Council. And, um, that is something that, that the, that if an appeal is, uh, mounted, perhaps we'll be, you know, as, as the refusal was drafted, uh, there wasn't, I don't believe, the strength, you know, to, um, support it. And, uh, we, we left with what we have and as such, uh, I am, perhaps for many of the reasons as outlined by Alderman Nolder, Mulder rather, and nodded to by, uh, Alderman Von Berto, uh, supporting the motion as it stands.
Right reply, Alderman Mulder?
Thank you very much, um, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, of course. I'd just like to correct a couple of things that were said. Um, when I was referring to building envelopes, I meant the setbacks and the building envelopes a, a, as well as the thing, I mean, what I'm talking about there seriously was if people came with developments that fitted within the scheme, there would be no advertising, there'd be no objections. Might I say, you would still have huge bulk and huge amenity, um, even if this was built with a scheme. So, you know, that, that to me is one of those things that, um, we're picking at the edges here. And I've previously said, I was very impressed with the deputations and the representations. I too have been on the site and spoke at length. And I would, and I think that, um, this might be, given the quality of the work that's gone into it, a great case to see if we can get a better interpretation, a better interpretation, Mr. Mayor, than ones we have had in the past. Had people come and said to me, look, in this case, when there was this percentage of view blocked out, the tribunal found this, you know, and, and that supports our case, then we could have had at least some precedent to hang on to. But I would think, Alderman James, that we, through you, Mr. Mayor, that we would be struggling. We would be struggling to find such examples. And we've gone down to now is that the officers.
Mr. Mayor, I feel my name was mentioned as part of.
Yeah, and.
And it should have been as part of summing up, I would have thought.
Look, uh, and he withdrew that remark.
Oh, did he?
Yes.
Oh, I figured so.
That's okay.
I didn't hear.
He did. Alderman Mulder, please continue.
Thank you, I'll take this interruption. Um, but why, why this is such a technical thing is that we have planning officers who have been to the appeals tribunal, who have, who have watched and closely monitored these reports. And their objection isn't, their assessment isn't their own personal feelings about this thing. This is based on how they know the planning commission has interpreted and operated in the past. And it's on that basis that I hope that this might be a case where we can get a different interpretation. But, but council should not be putting its neck in the noose in this regard when it knows full well, as the officers have pointed out, that, um, you know, that this is unlikely to succeed as a refusal. So I would once again, um, um, and in summing up, and the only real speaker was Alderman James, so, uh, that's why I've addressed my, um, comments to him. So I would, um, encourage us to vote for this and, uh, seriously look forward to it being, uh, finally settled in another area.
The motion for the chair is the officer's recommendation, uh, for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favor? Against? The motion is carried. Item four point two is a development application at sixteen Maxwell's Road, Cambridge for demolition and eight new warehouses. I move to Alderman Blomley. Second up? Have a second, please. Thanks, Alderman Yewington. Alderman Blomley? Alderman Yewington. Any other speakers? Alderman James?
Something because the others haven't. I su- support the officer's recommendation and I think it's a worthy cause.
Other speakers? I guess there's no need for a right of reply. Uh, put the motion for approval, subject to conditions and advice. All those in favor? Carried unanimously and that concludes our business as a planning authority. Moving on to governance. Item five point one, Greater Hobart Bill. Alderman Mulder?
I'll, uh, we'll circulate at the document, um, two pages with a, uh, with a heading five point one, Greater Hobart Bill that contains a recommendation that council provides the following comments in regard to the proposed Greater Hobart Act.
Do you have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alderman Von Berta. Alderman Mulder, you have a follow?
Um, the Greater Hobart Bill. This is a flagship, a piece of legislation which is designed, uh, or supposed to be designed to, uh, as, um, as this council said, the council advises the minister for local government, the council wishes to seek the establishment of a strategic alliance of Clarence, Hobart, Glenock and Kingborough councils to oversee and integrate a approach to strategic planning for sustainable and competitive urban growth within metropolitan Hobart, underpinned by a Greater Hobart Act. What we get is a partnership between four mayors and four ministers of the crown, chaired by a minister of the crown, who, uh, then proceeds to, um, basically, uh, that is how the committee will work. So in response to that, I'm not here and we, and it's not in our position to decide whether we like it or not, um, our decision is to make some comments on the draft legislation that is before us. The wording of the preamble, first of all, and I'll just work through some of the, what I think the comment should be, the wording of the preamble would be elevated to reflect the strategic planning nature and intent of the objectives of the bill. As we saw, the motion we had talks about strategy, it talks about a strategic alliance and it talks about, uh, um, strategic planning. But these things actually don't appear in the preamble of the bill. Um, it talks about, um, there's, um, there's about activity cent, the activity centers, which goes down to the incredible low level, you know, the local telephone box where people might be queued up waiting to make a phone call if those things exist anymore. So what I'm suggesting is that we also say that a definition of key, uh, that, that that needs, we need to have that sorted. We need to have that lifted up to an appropriate level. That a definition of key transport corridors be added and defined as those corridors that connect council areas in the Greater Hobart area. There is no definition of key transport corridors, yet that's one of the great, that was one of the bases of this greater collaboration that's needed. We talk about the Greater Hobart objectives and once again, strategic planning decisions about land use and the words in sub, uh, uh, those words appear in one of the sub clauses. I'm suggesting that that ought to be at the top so it then gives context and meaning to all the other sub clauses. And the Greater Hobart Committee, a strategic partnership between councils, the state government ought to be guiding, leading, advising and leading with perhaps the power to break deadlocks, but not the power to actually have equal voting rights with local governments. This is about local government collaboration. Now, sure, the state has got something to say and surely they have, there is a position there for the wider Tasmania community, um, but, but, but equal voting power? Um, so I think that, uh, we should have, um, the state government restricted to that one vote. Contents of work programs, although the intent of the bill is strategic planning for land use, the words strategic and planning are not specifically mentioned in clause eight, uh, once again, contents of work programs. And I suggest that that be fixed. Clause ten, approving draft work programs. This gives the chair the sole power to adopt or change work plans that are not unanimously agreed. This is an unnecessary power and we, I think, sub clause two should be deleted with some subsequent consequential amendments. But if you look at that power alone, very, you know, to amend as he or she sees fit. So in other words, if, if, if we can't get all four ministers and all four mayors to agree, if only one of them dissents, we've just empowered the state minister to amend that plan or adopt it or do anything as he sees fit. So, I mean, you can say I'm jumping at shadows as others have in the past, but if that capacity exists at law, you wait. Some minister will seize it. If it's not this one, one down the track will be. Standing clause eleven, review of work programs, sub clause three, provide the extensions of time that can be granted, the sole discretion to the chairperson. This ought to be reworded to ensure those with tasks with a work program are required to seek an extension from the whole committee and not just the chair. And, um, I think, Mr. Mayor, there was another issue we had to deal with which.
Probably releaseability, I think.
Ah, yes, yes. There's the issue, um, of this committee, this super committee. What we stand here and we have to stand here in account, in, in council and be accountable, as we saw recently, um, that we need that power to be, um, to be looked at so that, uh, those decisions are. are transparent.
Alderman Mulder, Alderman Von Berta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Mulder has gone into this in great detail. He's spent a lot of time actually thinking about this. I think it's really important to take into account his past experience, his experience within police dealing with legislation, and also his experience in the legislative council. I think he brings expertise to it and fresh eyes to it as well. I think it's important to note that he's covered from, if you like, the big picture, the strategic, through to quite detailed issues. And I think he's using the precautionary principle. So, he's actually looking at, perhaps this may never occur, but it also may occur, and so he's taking into account lots of different factors. And I commend Alderman Mulder's motion.
Here are the speakers. Alderman James?
It's interesting, and, and there are a couple of areas that I believe are important to sort of suss out. And, and it does make the whole organisation comprising of the Greater Hobart Committee in Part 2.6, and also the, the working committee that has the advisory committee, I beg your pardon, that is comprised of, and we all know the members or what's being proposed here is in fact each of the general managers, so you can say there's a bureaucratic sort of influence there, the secretary of the department, another bureaucrat, the secretary of the Department of Planning Minister. We do have a head of agency, the director of housing coming in here, although the secretaries are ahead of agencies, as I suggested, and then the secretary. So, we've got, we've got the, the four general managers, and then we've got a host of bureaucrats that are actually driving this thing from a advisory capacity, and also the chief executive officer of the infrastructure of Tasmania. And to top it off, we've got it on three, the person who is the member of the Greater Hobart Advisory Group under section 2F is to be the chairperson of the Greater Hobart Advisory Group. So, 2F is the secretary of the Department of State Growth. So, this committee is just full of bureaucrats. And I take you back to Will Hodgman's State of the Address, or if you want to call it that, when he said, we want to get people involved in this sort of decision making. Appreciate, thank you, Alderman Blomley. We want to get people involved. Oh, we want to get the regional people, the people that matter, involved in these sort of strategic plans. But what does this bill do? It lumps it into the advisory group of bureaucrats, and then over the page, we have, under the Greater Hobart Committee, we've got the mayors, four persons standing, in a sense, then they've got the vote to contend with, with the minister for economic development, who is in fact the chairperson of this particular committee, the minister for primary infrastructure, the minister, the minister, the minister, Uncle Tom Copley and all. So, you've got all these ministers driving the show, and then you've got the chair of the committee, who is in fact the, the minister for, or responsible for economic development. And what is more interesting, the person who is the member of the Greater Hobart Committee under section 2B is to be the chairperson of the committee. Why should he be or she be the chairperson of the committee? Why not the mayor? Why not have some other responsible people from outside the inner sanctum of bureaucrats and, and heads of agencies and ministers and so on, driving this thing? Of course, the four men standing, or the four persons standing, mayors, like, what show have they got? This is going to be run by the government? Okay, well, I did say person.
Alderman Blomley, please stand and interrupt.
He was quite right in correcting me. Persons, not men, or persons. I think I said that. But anyway, at the end of the day, we've got bureaucrats top heavy, we've got ministers top heavy, heavy, and four lone, lonely, or lone rangers, if you want to call them that. But usually lone rangers have a lot of capacity and ability to sway the argument, but they've got nothing. They can be outvoted, not only from the perspective of being part of the Greater Hobart Committee, but also too, they've got to contend with the GMs, and also the, the other secretaries of the agencies who might lock, lock arms, or lock, lock together in a sort of procedure to sort of outvote, and basically call the, the terms of any particular advisory methods that may come back to the, to the committee, the Greater Hobart Committee. This thing should not, this thing slaps in the face of what the Premier of Tasmania said in his address to the State only last week. And that is why I will not support this in this format, and even though there are some very good points that Alderman Mulder's made there, but again, I can't rely specifically on him as being, you know, a past police commander at Super Spring or whatever.
Thank you, Alderman James.
But I, at the same time-
Thank you, you're out of time.
I think we should support this. I got it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things which may perhaps be possible changes to consider. In 13.3, and this kind of goes to the idea that we are empowering the committee rather than the chairperson to, to make decisions. 13.3 actually says if the chairperson of the committee is of the opinion that amendments to the Southern Tasmanian Regional Land Use Strategy are required, is it possible to consider changing that to the committee rather than the chair? Because I think in the same manner that we've looked at the other items, it would be better to be a committee decision rather than the chair potentially.
Alderman Mulder, would you be prepared to accept that amendment?
Ah, yes, I'm sorry.
Is the second up happy?
The, the concept of the amendment, I'm not so sure that the words of the amendment, yes.
Well, at the moment it says if the chairperson of the Greater Hobart Committee, and given that these are comments rather than necessarily the exact word, it's 13.3. Yep.
Second up, happy to accept that?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And one other, possible to add, sorry, to add things to your amendment. One of the things this doesn't do is talk about any public visibility, accountability of what happens in this. Is it possible to put in some commentary that talks about, that we consider in the bill, or in the work plan, the regulations, that we have some public visibility of the proceedings and the decisions that are taken?
Alderman Mulder, would you be happy to accept amendment along those lines?
Yeah, I actually had some words written down along that very line, so I'm certainly happy to, to accept, to accept amendment along those lines, and if you give me two seconds, I'll actually mention them in summing up, so that is, and the next-
Okay, well, we needed, if we've got an amendment, we need to. So, I'll give you the opportunity to find those, Alderman Mulder, so that we know what we're talking about.
In the wire?
No, not yet, no, but it would be-
The words I had was that we include a commentary to the effect that the minister be advised of the desire for transparency in decision, in decisions and voting of the Greater Hobart Committee.
Okay, well, we can include that in our report as well. Second, are you happy with that? That the minister be advised that council would like to see some visibility?
Mayor, I'm wondering if that is not quite what Alderman Chong is actually talking about. Quite. Do we need to adjourn for five minutes for some word spitting? Because I don't get a sense of-
Look, I'm happy, given the importance of this comment and the significance that it has on this council, I, I think it's appropriate to try and get the words right on, on these two suggested changes. And when we resume, Alderman Warren has the floor.
I wanted to make my point on Alderman Chong's point.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay, so, I, I like Alderman Chong's suggestion on 13.3, but it no longer makes sense. I think when we discussed this in, in the briefing, we looked at the fact that maybe the intent of that clause was that the chairperson was to give notice to the planning minister. So, in other words, if you lick the first line and the last line, so if we change it to, if the committee is unhappy, we also need to change the second last line to say the chairperson is to give notice. That's all.
But so, I think we're actually at, I was, to something we might discuss.
We'll take a five minute-
Last words, two comments.
Well, we adjourn the meeting for a couple of minutes to sort this out. If, if the secretary and the mover could get together with Alderman Chong to come up with words for all of the motions.
22.
Try this, that some consideration be included in the bill and/or subsequent regulations concerning public visibility, proceedings and decisions.
What did you say that was different? I didn't see much difference, to be honest.
No, essentially, I think-
Yeah, yeah, I, I've got-
Well, were you happy with those words?
This is the second time I've used it. I would put in as much force.
Not at the moment. Ideally soon, but it's pre-form, so.
But the, the question is that some consideration be included in the bill to do-
Daughter goes to preschool a couple of days a week. Just turned four, so she'll be at primary school next year. Olive, so she's at Belref Primary next year, that's all gone through, so the kindy, yeah, the boys are obviously still a few years away, but. Yeah, your daughter's been, yeah. So, she's spent so many, going missing. It's fun, and how many are you? I've two, yeah. How old is that? She'll turn eighty-three by May, yeah. Yeah, I gave her eighteen. Yeah, she'll give you two next year. Will's just finished kindergarten, he's just turned six. On Tuesdays, yeah, I don't work Tuesdays. It's difficult, yeah. But at least it's a bit of a stake in the real estate. I'm at home, I can help you maybe, but yeah, I try to sort of, and I think I found-
Just write it down.
People do this. You know how like if you've got a mate who never gets back to text messages, you just work around him, don't you?
This becomes a new clause. So, a new clause being included, that some consideration be included in the bill?
Yeah. The world, what's that quote?
Biding the force.
You see that, especially in politics, you know, this people, but Malcolm is, you know, the pan, and now he's, you know, he's no one, rough, you know, all. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
No, that's good, yeah.
And decisions. He, I always had a lot of time for him as well. Just even seeing him on the banks with, I had a great stallions in Hamilton, so I can't remember, and just seeing him sort of waiting at the chair.
That's good.
I really liked to help him.
Yeah. What's a clause 13? So, so-
There's a subject.
No, 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 it's a slight change. So, if the Greater Hobart Committee is of the opinion, so delete the chairperson off, so delete the chairperson off there, and then insert down here, the chair is to give notice.
You've got to have the balance, you know, like, you've got to-
No, this is what's to do with-
So, what mine has increased transparency.
And then-
We're reworking some of the times.
Also, you always study for-
Yes.
This one here, just change both.
Right. So, 13, yeah, new clause.
We discussed it.
No, new clause.
My bad.
Yeah. No, no, new clause, period. And then a new item, 13.3, be amended to delete in the first line, the chairperson off.
Do you see the email around on the mercury today, the Hobart Council?
Made by the committee.
The email, Hobart arguing about height limits, back and forth. She, she has my service, they're coming, Reynolds, it's a really round, so that top in, so that, and Zuko bites back pretty hard. It's pretty interesting. Have you got passwords? Because I'm making a password.
Oh, no, I do, but.
It's, it's on the mercury side. They just put the whole thread up.
I'm sent your text, Joe.
Yes, thank you. I can't, I wonder if you don't get to that point. But yeah, someone's clearly just gone and copied, pasted and sent and published.
An amendment of the Stratus. If the, if the Greater Hobart Committee is of the opinion that the Stratus has to change-
About what you're expecting to be?
Then the chair is to advise the planning minister.
I think it's more. If someone has to build an 800 meter long, not 80, an 80 meter building, you know, it's like, themselves.
Okay, if we could, if we could resume the meeting, please, and I could ask Alderman Mulder if he could read out those two amendments, please?
I think it's a bit awkward, since I'm not on the floor.
All right. Alderman Chong should read them out as a suggester.
She's on the floor.
Okay, so the two proposals are firstly, a new clause, which says a new clause be inserted to provide appropriate transparency to proceedings and decisions of the Greater Hobart Committee. Degree in hieroglyphics. And the second one, for 13.3, is a comment that says that decisions to refer a matter to the planning minister be of the committee and not the chair acting alone.
And could I also note, Alderman Pearce has joined us. Thank you. All right, is the second up happy with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to explain to Alderman Warren, that we're actually making a comment rather than words. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, look, could we resume the debate, please? I think last speaker was Alderman James, Alderman Chong, and you've still got a little bit of time left if you want to continue.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Are there any other speakers? Right reply, Alderman Mulder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those were the real comments that I wanted to make, and that I think this is a better way of putting those comments in there. And might I say that in these comments, they're not, they're not, they can't be exhaustive. You know, you can't go to the nth degree and basically try to rewrite the bill as it is. I don't like the bill, but that's what, not what I'm voting on here today. I'm trying to get some comments back, as we all are, to the, to the ministers to try to say, this needs to be a partnership, not a dictatorship. Or as I summed up earlier today, the GHB or Greater Hobart Bill in its current form looks more like GBH. So, with that, I'd commend the commentary. So, with that, I'd commend the commentary.
The motion before the bill is circulated by Alderman Mulder, and amendments have been accepted by the mover and the second up. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. And that concludes our business in open meeting, so I need a motion to go into closed. Thanks, Alderman Pearce. Second up. Thanks, Alderman Walker. All those in favour? Carried unanimously, noting that Alderman James has left the room. So, move-